We'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 on Wednesday, May 11, 2022. I have in attendance Tony, Evan, myself, Jill on the phone. We have a quorum. So do I have any additions, deletions on the agenda items?
Not for me.
Hey, may I have a motion then, please?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. A review and approval of the April minutes? Any changes, corrections, typographical errors?
I'd like to make a suggestion that my name be spelled the same way everywhere. I noticed that.
I'm sorry.
Otherwise, that's okay. Otherwise, I move approval. Yes, sure.
But please sign in the roster.
Erica, can you tell me who's there?
Two chairs over there.
Yes, sir.
May I ask who?
Laura Conte and Eric Greer.
Laura Conte and?
Eric Greer.
Eric Greer. Okay. How do you spell it, Tony? M.A.S.U.C. cake?
Yes.
All right. I will make sure that it is spelled correctly.
Don't take offense at it.
Now, it's, yeah.
You got it right somewhere in there and wrong elsewhere.
It's like Jeff with E.R.I.C.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I apologize. I will make those corrections.
Don't apologize.
Okay. So are there any other changes that need to be made?
Not that I saw.
None here.
All righty. So may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I have edits to those, Erica.
Okay.
There were some typos, and I had some questions about them. I don't know if now's the best time or?
If it's the minutes from April, yes.
Okay. So I think that a question should be, type TV be listed as a, in attendance?
Doesn't have to be.
But perhaps we should do that so folks know that it's available. If they look at the minutes, they can see that there's also a recording that type TV was here. So I don't know. That's a suggestion I have.
Okay.
And then there were some typos. Oh, I also think that for members present, you could put my name just, members present, parentheses, alternate, just like your, you know.
Okay.
Down in four, voter approval of candle, Kansas ballot. Jaybird asked if, I believe, there were any questions?
Got it.
Let's see. And then I have a question on the second part of the second to last paragraph in that same, or second to last sentence in that same paragraph. Would it carry through to the proposed regulations? I wasn't sure if that was a question or, I was just a little unclear what was, what that was saying.
That was me paraphrasing, but that was more or less the question and a statement. And my answer was, yes, it would.
I see, okay. I believe on the proposed zoning regulations, the K. Mullin paragraph.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, yes.
There is the one, the second to last sentence.
Okay.
He, oh, and actually right above that. It's, I believe it's provision with an N at the end. For the next month with provision to vote.
Well, proviso is also.
Oh, proviso. That was a question. Thank you. And then, Tony, is your name spelled?
We've already been, we've been through.
We've already covered that.
Will send. And then the next one in italics, E. Burner, E. Burner asked.
I was going to say, please tell me I spelled my own name right, but that's.
No, you, yeah, you did. Yeah. Asked this to be tabled. Right, you didn't ask to be tabled. It says, E. Burner asked to be tabled. And I assume that you're, now that I'm saying it out loud, I know you're talking about regulations, but maybe this would.
That's okay. I can put in issue to be tabled or.
Yeah.
Where are we on that? I'm sorry.
E. Burner.
Right after, right after me where it says Airbnb regulations.
Okay, that's what I needed.
Ask this to be tabled, just that Erica's not asking to be tabled. I think that it's a short discussion followed, period, further discussion and actions. And I, our next paragraph, the K. Mullin livestock proposal, there's a sentence, E. Burner are looking at only foul. I think that might be is looking.
No, that should be asked.
Are looking. E. Burner are looking at only foul?
No. E. Burner asks.
Oh, asked. E. Burner asked.
Yes. The word asked didn't make it in there.
Got it.
Asked, are.
Yep. And then the, the paragraph, I have a question on this paragraph that starts, E. Burner asked if the village is proper, needed to be defined, or should it be restated in the proposed livestock section, right? We're talking about the proposed livestock?
Yep.
Section. And then agreed to refer within the section. I was unclear what we meant by that. Was that that there was a consensus amongst?
Yep.
The commission?
Yep.
Okay. I guess, can we add some, some agreement? Because I guess I don't remember quite that. So can we put a modifier in there?
It was agreed to refer to it within the section.
Yeah. Maybe we'll just discuss it in greater detail today.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Right. May I have a first, second?
Move approval of the, the minutes as amended.
Amended.
Approval.
I'll second it. Jill, we didn't lose you, did we?
Joe?
I'm here.
All right.
Okay. We have a guest visitor, Barbara Neus-Polling, from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, who asked to talk to us for a few minutes.
Yeah, just need a few minutes. Welcome.
Hi, Barbara.
Hello.
Thank you.
So we like to do these consultations with you, like halfway through the period of your town plan. And so we go over, there's some questions about the plan and what we, what the Rutland Regional Planning Commission can offer the town, your planning commission, and any feedback you have for us is what I'd like to go through here. And we do another form, and when, after this, I'll finish this form, and then I can send it back to you, Erica. So your town plan was adopted in June 4, 2018. So that means it expires June 4, 2026, eight years now. It was a solid, it is a solid plan, and it has three designated village centers. So the regional planning commission can assist the town with landowner assistance to apply for village center tax credits and other financial incentives. We can help train on V. Trans transportation alternatives. They're called TA grants, awards. We can provide municipal project management services to the town, assistance with ARPA questions, Act 250, Section 248 permitting, energy planning, and assistance with water quality projects through, specifically through the new Otter Creek Clean Water Service Provider. That is being led up by Addison County Regional Planning Commission because most of Otter Creek is in Addison County, but of course, part of it's here. So we will be working with Addison County on that. And what that is, is a lot of money that's coming down to clean up phosphorus going into Lake Champlain. And it's actually, this DEC is decentralizing a lot of responsibilities and giving it to these clean water service providers. And so a lot of money will be coming down and be a lot of projects hopefully done throughout the water basin. So that's clean water service provider. Review of your plan, you have all the required elements. The town has zoning and subdivision regulations. It's a 10-acre town in the eyes of Act 250, and there are flood hazard bylaws as well. The town's non-regulatory implementation priorities include village center designation for three regions, three areas of the town. And that designation is good until July 1 of 2029, and then you can just reapply at that point. So the, our, the regional planning commission, we can help you with village center assistance, the project management, the municipal project management services, planning, construction projects, enhanced energy planning, implementation of clean water quality projects, continued assistance with transportation projects, and ARPA assistance, if you want that. The board rep to the regional planning commission is Erica. And I don't think there's an alternative. And specifically with your plan, the strikes is, it is very solid. It's a beautiful plan. You guys did a great job with that. Very user-friendly and readable. It's a slick document. The survey results from the community dinner that was done to launch that is amazing. Good initial forest block and habitat connector language, clear, concise, and achievable action items and timeframes for that.
Which, of course, because of COVID has been changing.
Yeah. I've heard that before. Aspects of the town plan that are less effective, a lot of the data, or some of the data comes from the American Community Survey from U.S. Census Bureau, and those are estimates. So they could be inaccurate. You might want to update those. And opportunities to make it more effective, you can also update the action items deadlines since the timeframe has been sliding, and reexamine the data in a couple of years to ensure accuracy for ACS, American Community Survey. Or, you know, get the 2020 census data in. It has a lot of the stuff that goes into town plans. So any, any local things that you're looking for help with or priorities or anything that the regional planning commission is not providing? Anything that we should know about?
No, I think.
Burning local issues that we might?
Can't think of any, Jill. I know Devin from the transportation has been here.
Yeah.
Dealing with sidewalks. And the bridge over the creek road is hopefully on the list to get repaired, hopefully, so we can get rid of that huge metal plate. I know Devin's met with, again, with the sidewalks, once they did a walking tour. Devin, representative from DARPA, Kathy Luzater from the select board, and Sandy literally walked around, and they met on Monday. I can't say for what because I wasn't part of that meeting, but I know they're looking at repairing or doing something to the sidewalks to improve them. The main thing, of course, I think at the transportation was the Creek River Bridge and the fact that it needed to be fixed or at least get on the plan. Because if that bridge goes, then there's only one other way to get into the creek road, and that's seven, 7.5 miles out of the way. So you have to go up seven, come over Cold, you know, Walker Mountain, and then come back in, which would delay emergency vehicles getting in there. And while right now, seven and a half miles they could do, if the Otter Creek decides to flood, that end is the end that gets flooded out. So literally, nobody can get in or out except by boat.
So is anything been done on that project? Any scoping studies or?
I don't know anything about it, but I know, I know it's on the list for V. Trans. It's going up to, to the V. Towns. And that's all I'm aware of.
When are the next municipal planning grants going to be coming around?
So, yeah, they're annually. So the deadline? Yeah, it has been the end of September, and I think that's the, that's the case in 2022.
And you think that the funding will be similar to what it's been in the past? So it's been pretty, there's been a lot of funding for municipal planning grants recently?
It should be. It should be comparable. They, you know, they, they do try to make it geographically equitable around the state and even within regions. So if you haven't had one in a few years, your chances are to increase for that.
I don't think that, I don't think Wallingford's had one.
We did for the plan.
We did for the plan, yeah.
Yeah, but that was, was that a municipal planning grant? Or was that a Better Connections Program, the ACCE?
That was a municipal planning grant.
Yeah.
But that was three or four years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was 2017, actually.
You adopted the plan in 2018.
So it would have been 2017, so it's five current and past years, yeah.
Yeah.
Prior to that, because those plans take a little while.
Would that also help with the update, like bylaw and zoning updates too?
Yes. Yep, anything, anything planning related, even, you know, even into like the design of, of projects you never run a town.
Yeah.
That's still considered planning, not the construction.
Right.
Up until construction, you know.
Yep.
There are opportunities there.
Can we get a copy of what you told us tonight?
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
You think that worthwhile?
I thought it was.
No, I just. Yes, definitely.
Then I think men from Mars are stealing my socks, so.
Whatever can help you out. Yeah, I'll fix up my chicken scratching here and.
Well, you can just email one to Erica, and she'll get it all to us.
Yeah, no problem. Be happy to do that. Any other questions for Barbara?
I had a question about the water. Earlier this year, there was a thing where you could apply for a new well or something. There was funds available, et cetera, et cetera. And myself and several of my neighbors have put in application. This would have been four or five months ago. Never heard a word.
Yeah. It doesn't sound, it doesn't sound outrageous. Is that not the time? I think it does take that long sometimes, but.
Okay.
I can, let me check on that.
Yeah.
It was, was it a community well?
No, it was just to upgrade, you know, at your home so that the water, because, you know, whatever you bring it up is going back into the creek. It's bottom line right there.
So is this one well?
Yeah, for each of us.
Oh, okay. And do you happen to know what name it went under?
No, it was in the paper. Then we went to the website and got the paperwork and filled it out and sent it in, and it went into the Twilight Zone.
Jill, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Did you want to talk about the enhanced energy plan at all?
Or incident?
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
If you want to stay for a minute?
Sure.
Okay. The zoning administrator monthly report is, we are beginning to really get requests for permits. To give you all just an example, on Monday, we issued, we issued six permits on Monday for various renovations, buildings, et cetera. So people are beginning to realize that the warm weather's here. No new buildings. It's renovations, sheds, porches, that type of thing. The development review board has agreed to meet on the 25th of this month, and it has been publicly warned, on an application from the new owners of the Ivy Munson House. And that's at the usual 7:00. And notices have gone out to the abutting property owners. So they are requesting a sign and a permit to operate an Airbnb when they are not using it as their vacation home. So we'll see what happens with the DRB. And that's all for the monthly report. So the energy plan from the energy committee.
So I was just going to mention that we're kind of betwixt and between where the state is right now with energy planning. The, the plan you started with, I, I don't, because you're Australian ballot, you probably didn't have any hearings or any.
Not yet. We've been holding off on that.
Yes, so there may be some new rules and standards that will apply to this new plan. At the very least, we should, we should wait until the state does all of its updating. It did a new comprehensive energy plan for the state of Vermont at the end of last year, and that triggers, you know, whatever news that's going to go into enhanced energy plan will come out of that comprehensive energy plan. So there were some things. And they want to redo the modeling, which shows, you know, how towns can get to, you know, 90% renewable by 2050, you know, whether it's through heat, electricity, or transportation. So they're redoing all of that modeling, that, you know, all of those bar graphs that are in the enhanced energy plan now, those we updated, they may be changing. The maps will be changing a little bit. And the only new real requirement, and it's kind of, kind of hedges, it's, it's protecting forests more and putting in priority forest blocks, wildlife blocks, landscape blocks. So that you can do in the new plan, or you can wait till the next one. But that's, they just want everybody to start thinking along those lines now. So the upshot is we really can't proceed with the plan as it is right now. We'll have to wait probably until fall. That's, hopefully, that's not optimistic thinking. It may be later for the modeling, the maps. You know, even when the modeling's done, we need to figure out, it's going to be state modeling, and then we, the regional planning commissions will have to figure out how that applies to each of the regions, the eleven regional planning commission. And then we'll have to come up with some way to figure out locally, ministerially, how that will work. So we've been working on this for almost a year. Just, you know, them, the state letting us know, it's, it's the public service department. They authored that plan. And so they've been telling us what their thinking is, what they're putting in, and that, you know, they've been, we've been sitting down with them for that long, and it's not over yet, getting these other components in. So sorry for the bad news there.
Have you told our energy committee, or should we do that?
Either way, either way, Erica.
What does the, shall we reject? I, I, I'm just asking, think about this. We can take a motion. We have the plan. The energy committee has asked us to accept it. Should we accept it, or should we send it back to them? We have comments to wait until the updated version necessary or whatever from the state.
I mean, we could ask them, you know, see what they want to do. It seems like if I, if I were on the energy committee and I spent a lot of time putting this together, and then I heard that the state's going to change it, I don't know how fast I'd want to be to start working on a new one. They may just say, you know, this is what you have for now. I don't, I don't know how long, I mean, it seems like it took a long time for them to come up with this. You know, we may be waiting another year and a half or, I don't know. I don't know how much the state's going to have, going to sort of make people have to revise what they've already come up with. If it's just changing a couple of sections, that seems not too onerous on them, but if it's, we got to start from scratch, maybe we should ask them first before we decide to.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Should we ask them first?
I think so.
Or what is the process if we accept it, and then they revise it, and then we accept and revise work?
If the planning commission accepts it.
And then the revisions happen as they come forward, so that, that is accepted, the work that they've done, then, like, what is the process to get it re-accepted is, I guess, my question? Because wouldn't it make sense if they've done all this work, and it's pretty close, that we accept that and then revise that so that it's in place?
Remember, here in Wallingford, any changes have to go before the town for Australian voting. So if, if, say, for example, the process, it goes on the ballot in August. After public hearings, it goes on the ballot in August. It gets accepted in August by the town. It's signed off by the select board. Then the changes happen in the fall. They would have to redo the changes. We'd have to have public hearings again, and then it would have to go through Australian ballot again. So, I mean, that's the process. I'm just explaining it. And that itself would entail whenever the town has an election or if the select board decides to hold a special election for acceptance.
So then almost doesn't make sense to accept it, does it? Because, or to at least prove move forward, because there, it sounds like there's a chance that it would be, to Tony's point, over a year out? I don't know. What's your advice to you, Barbara?
Right now, I, I can't give it to the state because we're in this twixt and between period. They won't accept it. And so, you know, after it goes, makes the rounds, and does everything legally here in Wallingford, it needs to be approved by the regional planning commission. And it, it wouldn't get approval because it doesn't meet the state specs, state standards right now. It's not going to be wholesale changes. I mean, like, the graphs and, you know, the references to those can be taken out, new ones put in. The, the sentiment, the gist of the plan would still, would still be there, I would think, unless you want to change that. But, you know, the directions you want to go, the, the actions you chose to take to, you know, to help conservation and, you know, changing fuel use. I think those would remain. The maps, you could take the map, put new ones in.
So basically, we shouldn't accept it then because it's not acceptable to any higher place? So if the recommendation is ultimately, then we probably should move forward with the plan as it stands?
Yeah.
So then it's less of a question and more of letting the, the energy commission.
Yeah. And, and a lot of this new information will come down from the regional planning commission. You know, the maps and, you know, the information that goes into the, the graphs and the modeling. So it'd be a little lighter lift than, than starting. It's, it's not starting from scratch. And I had, just working with another town recently amended, but they were a little bit further along. You know, they were in this period too, but they'd already had a planning commission hearings. They hadn't gone to the select board yet. I was, you know, I was able to get that one pushed through, you know, using standards that are, that exist now. But, since you haven't had anything really formal done, I don't think the Planning Commission has approved any version, right?
No.
So, yeah, I'm not sure I could convince the state that it has proceeded far enough along that it should keep going.
Well, I think that was our answer then.
Yeah.
Can we just table it and just put it on hold, basically? Not accept or reject it?
Send it back?
Yeah. And, you know, and I'd be glad to work with the Energy Committee on, you know, what needs to be changed. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's part of my job, so. Easily do that. You know, it was a long process. There were several different authors of the Wallingford Energy Plan. You know, it went from a very long, you know, document to something that's much more manageable now. So, you could look at this as just part of its evolution. But that was one of the reasons why it took so long. It wasn't that it was, you know, you know, the state was interfering, or the Regional Planning Commission was interfering. It was, it was just something that the Energy Committee had to work out. Yeah.
So, did you leave a motion there?
Allergies. I'll fight. As long as I don't talk. Can I get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to just table it for now until the state makes things more clear.
I'll second it.
Want a little fever?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I think the Energy Committee's been working on this since 2017. And I wasn't sure exactly where they were right now, so I hadn't reached out yet. But I don't have a precise date to tell them when they're gonna get all the information either. It's all... I will send the email to them. Okay. I actually am okay, it's just allergies. Bad ones. Okay. Anything else? Energy? All right, I'm okay. Thank you, Barbara. And thank you for all the work.
Sure.
Proposed zoning regulations. Tony?
Well, I mean, Barbara sent me something. She sort of revised what I wrote, and then she suggested that I might look at Westmore's solar screening regulations. But, I mean, she did offer good advice in that I had referenced the wrong state statute, which I lifted from some other town. I'm not sure if theirs is wrong too, or it just was applied differently. But then she's, you know, when I looked at Westmore's and I looked at what we had, and it just seemed that they had a different process for, for, you know, resolving anything. It just didn't seem to make sense to me because of, I just couldn't, basically, I couldn't borrow from them because they were referencing part of their town zoning regulations that we didn't have in place. So, it would involve us trying to decide to put those in place to revise the solar screening. And I just, I just gave up, basically. I admit failure on this. I thought that what I had come up with was pretty good, and Barbara didn't seem to have any major objections to it, but said, well, you could make it better if you went to, you know, Westmore's. But I just couldn't see how to do that. So, I'm kind of sticking with what... Did you get the email that she sent to me? The revised, I'm just, I just left it at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have anything, but I, I didn't think Tony's proposal last time was, you know, it was okay. And we just need to, every town's gonna be a little different. And if we don't have things in the zoning and other areas that we can bounce those things like Westmore. So, hey, we gotta work with what we got.
Okay.
I would say that there's definitely edits that could be made to this to make it clearer for the people we're gonna be doing. In terms of verbiage and just description and... So, I think you said last time, go ahead, mark it up.
Sure.
So, I did, I have a markup kind of in the, I didn't ever get a digital version, so I kind of did the red lines. But maybe I could look at Westmore as well to see what you were looking at and get the digital copy to make some of these changes, just to tighten it up and answer a couple of questions.
I got no problem with that.
I don't either. You could have, well, I don't know if you have my email, but you could have emailed any, anyone whose email you have.
We'll go forward from here.
Okay.
Okay, so Lucy, you'll take a stab at it?
Yeah.
Good.
Airbnb. I included in your packets for this evening the permit and license information on lodging establishments, health considerations of long-term operators, and the licensed lodging establishment rule. They keep on referring to bed and breakfast in here. Airbnb, of course, if you look at the dates, this is 2019 and 2018. But basically, they all say the same thing. Is that a person has, well, lodging establishment is, they have to have a license to operate an establishment which provides lodging to the public. And it's three or more units that cater to the traveling and transient public. And advertises that they have lodging by the night or weekend. This includes bed and breakfasts, inns, motels, hotels, and lodges. So, there is no way that we're gonna incorporate. Well, the manual itself, I did not make copies of it, but I can send you, send you what I downloaded.
So, just...
Thirty-one pages.
Yeah, just so I understand, the front page of this one. So, are we saying if somebody only has two units, they don't fall under this?
You know, that's a good question. But, yeah, I, I... Yes and no.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm saying that is if you go under where it says short-term rentals from the Department of Taxes, it basically says, operators of short-term rentals located in Vermont who advertise on the internet platform are required to post their Vermont Meals and Moves Tax Account number if they advertise. So, that could be taken if you're advertising a couch for short-term rental. And it does say, however, the operator uses an internet platform such as Airbnb, Airbnb has an agreement to collect the taxes already and will send it. So, Airbnb is sending taxes at least, but they're not... I mean, if you have an Airbnb, Airbnb will collect the tax and will send it to the state, but they're not necessarily licensed. Airbnb doesn't check on it, neither will the state.
So, the state gladly takes the taxes, but doesn't look to see what the condition is of the place that's providing the taxes? Okay.
Well, it very well could be. I get the impression it's one of these deals where one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing. Yes?
Can I, can I, can I add something? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Just identify yourself, please.
I'm Laura Hocky, Long Island resident. We created a new organization during COVID, called the Vermont Lodging Association, BLI, I'm actually familiar with them, but they're totally a very good resource. Brian Nagini from the Internet Chapter is one of the advisors of the site, he's probably a really good resource for this whole conversation. If you're looking at one of the sites, it's a thing that's mature to dealing with it in the Internet Chapter.
Thank you, that's a good resource. If I can get the website after the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll look at that. Okay. So, and the main, the thing that I think is really, to me, the most important is the health considerations. The appliances, the hot and cold water, sewage systems, guest rooms, cleaning supplies, insects, rodents, other pests, and so on and so forth. It makes for fairly interesting reading, actually.
They could pay for their own room.
Excuse me?
The insects and the pests can pay for their own room.
That's true, too. And refuge containers, swimming pools.
So, we still don't have a clear answer if somebody only has two, two units to rent? They don't need a license?
You know?
Yeah.
No. Three or more? Yes, but the state says any.
Okay.
So, I guess it would be up to us. But as you can see, under the fees on the same page, which is sheet number 51, lodging capacity of 1 to 10. And that's the fee. To take out the licenses, $130. So, obviously, they are anticipating somebody to only have...
One.
One.
Now, we've been going round and round with regard to fire inspection and such. It's important, it's more important if someplace catches on fire. Do we have someone to do that inspecting?
In the 31-page document, and I can send you all a copy of this, I did download it today. It's Chapter 6, Environmental Health, Subchapter 1, Licensed Lodging Establishment Rules. And the authority is, and it says what the Vermont statutes are. According to this, you've got to have everything, including, I think I read it someplace, transfer of licenses. It talks about food surfaces. Let me see if I can find this. Employees, toilets, guest and public safety. All establishments, and this is on page nine, 10.0, guest and public safety. All establishments must comply with any relevant state, local, fire, and life safety laws and regulations, which basically means you have to have the fire marshal. It does specify that smoke detectors will be maintained and operated, portable fire extinguishers. Lodging, and that the lodging establishment shall meet the requirements and follow applicable building codes, fire codes, and ordinance, including an evacuation diagram if necessary. And there is another section, if I read it right, that basically the fire marshal has to approve it.
Well, just so they know that.
Well, if anybody comes in, they will get a handout that basically says all this. Okay? So, that's where they're, that's where we are from there. So, do we need to enlarge the section? Do we want to just refer to...
I don't think we have to put any more onus on anyone, more than the state does.
I agree. So, shall I take a stab at rewriting the section to the, to point people to this?
Yeah. You okay with that, Lucy?
And I will make sure that it is correct. Okay. All right. Livestock, and I believe, Laura, you want to address the committee concerning livestock?
I, first of all, just here to see what you've decided.
Well, we're, last time we had, that we met, Jill said, you know, why don't we be specific about what we're including as livestock? So, I worked up a page here. By classification, bovines, sous-dé, bovedé, domestic poultry, equines, leopardé, cabbies, and exotic pets. Basically, these are things that ought not to be in the village proper to certain levels. And the only thing that we didn't ever discuss, honestly, was what about people with bunnies? Especially around this time of year, a lot of people get bunnies. And the problem with bunnies is that two bunnies becomes 20 bunnies in a hurry. With regard to guinea pigs, I did some research into that, and it was amazing how quickly they breed. Forty-eight hours after the female delivers a litter, she is fertile again. Forty-eight hours. And so, and they wean them at three weeks. So, I was arbitrarily put down here that by the end of four weeks, you gotta get rid of all the ones except the two you started with. Because, you know, you got a month to find homes, you know? I thought that was reasonable. I didn't, I didn't wanna even put my foot into the bunny discussion without some hearing of what everybody else had in mind. But as far as exotic pets, for instance, shall be licensed if required by the state of Vermont, and shall be housed in appropriate domiciles and kept under control of the owner at all times. That's kind of a pretty standard thing. And so, under the control of is gonna differ from one exotic pet to the next, as far as I'm concerned. People get them and then they forget them. But it's, you know, because when we put forth the idea last time about, you know, livestock in the village proper, Jill said, hey, let's be specific. So, we were specific here. You want a copy of this? We got another, I got one.
No, I have got this.
Out of curiosity, is there a, because I listened to the last hearing, is there a, is there a limit for the number of, like, dogs you can have? Or cats you can have? Like, what?
Dogs and cats are considered pets, they're not livestock. And so, that's not what we're dealing with here.
No.
Okay? That's a whole other public health issue. And when you get in with, with, once you get into pets like dogs and cats, then you got, you know, well, I got nine cats and I'm fine. Well, you know, maybe you're fine, but I don't know about the neighbors. So, it's, it's always been dealt with statewide as a public health issue. Okay? And so, we didn't, we didn't even plunge there.
Yeah, I just didn't even know if there were any parallels.
Ah. That's, that's, it's another kettle of fish, we don't live there. So, what I tried to do here was be specific, just so nobody would be surprised. Hey, I bought a buffalo and I thought I could keep it in the village. You know? Or my grandmother had a bison farm, and when she died, we all got one.
Actually, bison burgers are pretty good.
They're delicious, you know?
Looks like you have everything covered.
I've tried.
Your cover house.
But, you know, no one's infallible. I just did the best I could. I looked at, I looked at the Vermont statute and tried to be more specific under the general headings. The whole thing is, I have no dog in this fight. It's, it's not like I'm trying to keep, you know, 16 horses in the middle of town. I don't have a... have a, and so I can be, I hope, objective. Pardon?
That's the best, yeah?
Yeah.
I still have a question about, you know, we can kind of go village proper, which Erica has referenced as historic map, but I think it literally, like, you need to see an actual box around the village proper.
Right up there.
Which, which one? So.
In pink.
In pink.
Okay, so that only applies to this village proper?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because we also say non-agricultural zoning districts.
Well, part of this village proper are, is, well, all of the village proper is non-agricultural district.
Yes, I know, but the lead-in says no farm animal does define, and the rats shall be allowed in non-agricultural zoning districts. That's different than village proper, those are different, those mean different things, perhaps there's some overlap. And I think that, so, I think in terms of appropriate, the village proper to these regulations, I think, more or less makes sense to most of these, but I don't think that it should apply to the non-agricultural zoning districts as a whole. I think, right?
Just to back you before that, one of the changes we're going to make is rather than saying farm animal, we're going to say livestock.
So there are new draft that we just.
No, I just, because I didn't want to make it up until we settled everything tonight, you know, it seemed moot. If everybody was happy with the animals here, then we could get into things like that. But Erica suggested, and I agreed 100%, that if we change it from farm animal to livestock, it more, it conveys more the thought behind it. And, as far as the non-agricultural zoning districts, which particular area did you think might come into play?
The forest integration.
Oh, that's, that's.
A huge district.
Well, but as far, it's not in the village proper.
Well, right, and that's my point, is that we, there's two different things going on in the last draft you gave, so I think perhaps there will be clarification in the next draft.
Okay.
But just going off of what we talked about last time, that was somewhere where we kind of didn't fully land.
Okay, I'll get that in there.
Can I ask, you're saying you would allow livestock in the forest? Because we just came to get the livestock.
It's a district, so it's the forest.
District.
Or.
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily mean.
Forest land.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
And a longer forest land, we could say.
Right.
Right, that's just a zoning designation.
Yeah. And, in the process of doing all this, I can tell you that there's a lot of places that are really, really picky about things like the manure piles and such, with regard to how often. And I'm like, wow, I don't know if I'd have anything if I had to move manure piles that often. But, in general, I just thought it was a workable, you know, thing, so here it is. I'll rework the wording with regard to the non-agricultural districts, and so that there's no confusion there. I can do that.
And then it would be like no slaughtering of livestock animals, that'll change, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, it's all going to change.
So just to be clear, on your list here, are there groups of animals that are allowed in certain quantities? Are you still working that out?
Well, see, everything is not.
Excuse me, can you say who you are?
Yeah.
I'm Eric Reeder.
Okay. Everything is not necessarily prohibited, like domestic poultry chickens, we're allowing up to 12.
Is that, is that what the decision was?
That's in the draft.
You're looking at.
Okay, that's what we were looking at. And that was kind of in compliance with towns. However, the one thing that every town was unanimous on, no roosters. And, and so, no roosters. And, some of this is, like, scrubs are just young chickens. But somebody might say, well, I got scrubs. Okay, so we put scrubs in there. That's all I was trying to do.
Could people get a permit, though? So, I mean, like, for a goat, I know folks that have goats for pets, and they're quiet and they don't make noise, and maybe there's a two-acre lot in the village proper where somebody could have a goat, is that, is that like permissible, or?
I would say, you apply for, what is that? Try to think of the word. Anyway, it's like an exemption.
Yeah, we have variants.
Yeah, variants, that's what I needed. And I wouldn't be against it if somebody had, you know, sufficient space. It's just my experience with goats, having at one time owned seven horses and three goats, is that no matter what, they seem to get over a fence.
You know, I have neighbors that I have done by their goats, they never make a sound, they're always in their tent, and I think they're the exception to the rule.
Yeah, they are.
But I was just wondering, so this list of, this is not necessarily prohibited, it's just.
Just what we're controlling.
It's what we're controlling.
Yeah. And I mean, the thing about goats is they like to get high. So when they get over your fence, you find them on someone's hood or on the roof of someone's car, all right? And those hooves do a wonderful job on the finish.
Yeah, or somebody wanted, like, ducks, ducks, rather, to add to their flock, something they could ask.
Yeah, we could talk about that.
Is that right?
For instance, if they had, well, it's not in the village, though, like some huge pond.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But this is just what we're going to try to control.
Well, I can tell you in the UAE, I used to have goats go past my car all the time as a traffic jam.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Herds, and they love the trees.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's like all my time in Ireland, I loved driving, except when the sheep, sheep have the right of way, they do. And you just, as soon as I would see the sheep coming out, I would just put the car in neutral and get a Coke. But, yeah, so this is what we're trying to do with this. We say, these are the animals we're going to control, and there will be certain levels of control, with some and others, no. And as always, I don't think any bit of legislation doesn't have a variance permitted somewhere, if you can demonstrate the reason to have a variance.
I think that would have to go before the DRB.
Yeah.
And then would we talk about, I know that there was some communication over email from a town resident, and there was a question about grandfathering?
That's already covered in the description.
It's, okay.
It says, do not apply retroactively to practices in place at the time of their enactment, second parent.
But in terms of, so, the part I think is weird about this is, how do you, so what if the animal dies?
I know.
So then, is there like a six-month, or do we need to explicitly say that there's like, within six months if you don't, is that like, what, because what I don't understand is how this fight works to live, live animals, how do you, how does that work?
That's something we're going to have to come to a consensus on.
We haven't, we haven't really.
No, we haven't discussed it.
No, that's not bringing it up.
Yeah.
Because it's different than like a building.
That's right.
I would say, and only for, to start the discussion, I would say, for example, if somebody has, already has chickens, obviously, those chickens are not going to last that long.
Forever, yes.
And they replace them. That's, they've already had the chickens, it's perfectly okay. But somebody coming in, wanting to bring in, and I'll make this up, a camel, no. Or if they already have a camel, well, they wouldn't, let's say, in the town proper, that's grandfathered in, you're not forced to get rid of it.
Yeah, I know, but.
But if it dies, it dies, that's it.
So you think that, and so in your opinion, once that animal dies, then it is, you cannot replace it, so there's, so it's grandfathered in as long as it lives, and then you need to come into compliance?
That's how I would interpret it, but that doesn't mean that that has to be the interpretation.
I would go along with that, though.
You know, it is up to the planning commission.
Yeah.
What if a person had five camels, and four of them die, or one, are they allowed to go back to the five camels? Or, I don't understand, is this not, are they just about the number, is it about the type of animal, or the quantity, or is it, what is the, what is the?
That's up for discussion.
And how do you know it was named camel, because I wouldn't ask them to say.
Well, I doubt if you'd have a camel in Vermont anyway.
Yeah.
So basically, why we're here is about chickens.
Good.
So.
Be honest.
Yeah, yeah. So you talked about the number 12, and you had also talked about all the regulations for handling the manure and things like that, because there are concerns that come with that. Is that something that would be part of that 12? Would there be some sort of inspections on the place to monitor how many?
The most important thing that we found is that neighbors keep an eye on that stuff.
But if they're in a large building, it's.
Right, you're exactly right.
Nothing across the fence to go peek.
Let's say, let's take the arbitrary number 12. Chickens are what I call a renewable resource. They're not like a llama, okay? We expect they're going to die and be replaced. Okay? So chickens, there's been a lot of discussion about chickens. And so long as they're protected, and I mean that, because, like, I have a friend that's keeping chickens in Rutland, and he thinks they're protected, and yet somehow the foxes get in and they get the chickens. And so, we don't want that happening, you know? But, I don't think there's going to be any chicken police.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I mean, I don't think any worry about, or asking to take chickens away, but that's not, the question is, who the limit, like, because it's, you know, the chickens are there, and many people have chickens in town, I mean, I don't know where the borders are that I walk in, there's lots of them. But the question is, if they're already above that quantity of 12?
Yeah, that's what the whole purpose of, you know.
And this is where the grandfathering question comes in.
Right.
Because if that chicken dies, and they've got 15, then what Erica's, and Tony both think that it should then be done, they don't get to get that, they can't not replace it as possible, and have to go with that.
No, I think what they were saying was, not with regard to chickens, but with regard to large.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I mean, as Jill might point out, if she's still there, if you want to raise livestock, go into the agricultural district, don't move into town. And, you know, as Kevin said, there's not going to be any chicken police, no one's going to go and see whether you have 12 or 15, but if you have, you know, 1,000, or 100 or 200, that might be an issue. And it would be up to your neighbors to, you know, complain about it. I mean, there's zoning violations up near where I live, in the rural residential district, I haven't complained about them. I don't know what they're planning to do with their property or whatever, but I'm not complaining about it, they don't bother me, I don't bother them.
Yeah, I know, but I don't think that, we, I don't think that it is good practice to make regulations that you assume are going to be broken as long as it's not an issue, and then it's just like enforcement.
I think the most.
Well, you can be the chicken police.
Well, I don't want to be the chicken police, I guess one question I have is, is 12, how, I assume you guys might be village residents?
Ah, yes.
Yes.
How does the number 12 sound to you? Is it low?
I, in a little bit of research I've done, it's a little higher than comparable towns in my, in what I've seen, you know, with Brandon, et cetera. However, I'm not worried about that, more worried about, and I was worried about there being two or 300 chicken pets, that's a great issue. But I'm more worried about that, that I do believe there are more than just 12, and have been more than just 12, and there's been roosters. So I'm more concerned about, if you're saying things can be grandfathered in, are we going to let people say it's a number that they historically been at, which is higher than 12? And have roosters, but I don't want to give her the roosters, are the roosters grandfathered in? So my question is, if you're going to allow things to be grandfathered in, which things are grandfathered in, and how, and I don't want people to have to manage that, and I don't think that neighbors should have to either, that can cause the town, like, relationship issue, when neighbors have to.
I mean, but, you know, I'm not saying that that's what should be happening, but that's what happens. I mean, there's no one who's going around inspecting properties for violations, and there probably will not be, and that's how things happen.
And you expect people to be respectful of the town rules, absolutely.
And if they're set out there, if someone has 15 chickens, you know, they're going to be maybe a little more careful than someone who has 11, I don't know. But, I mean, that's just what, that's just how things happen. And, like I say, I don't think that if someone has 100 chickens, they should be grandfathered in from now until whenever they die, or sell their property, or whatever, you know, that just doesn't seem right to me, if someone else moves into town and wants to bring their 100 chickens with them.
Well, they can't, because they would have just moved here.
Right.
I understand that, but it sets a double standard, almost, saying, well.
There's no double standard there.
Well, if I had the 100 chickens, and we're moving into town, and the two people next to me had 100 chickens each, I would call it a double standard, you can call it what you want.
Is it, is it the lot, or is it the person? Like, that person moves two doors up, and they get to take their 100 chickens with, like, you know, the whole grandfathering thing really does kind of add a whole, I didn't even consider that before I came here to that.
Is it being grandfathered, because there was no regulation before, so?
Yeah, yeah, and one of the things that the state is careful to tell the towns is not to put anything on people more than we do, if you can avoid it. Now, let's be honest, the village of Wallingford is kind of unique. It's the most historic main street in town, it's got a lot going for it. And you could imagine, somebody comes up here with their 75-year-old wife, and they're walking down the street, and they're trying to avoid stepping on chickens. It's not why they came, you know? So we're trying to preserve the historic aspect of the village. That's really the thrust of almost all of this.
And of course, you do also have to remember that when you're talking the village proper, excuse me, when you're talking the village proper, say from the light, for the most part, you're talking at the most, not 100%, not with all the lots, but you're talking anywhere from three-quarters of a lot, a third of a lot, a quarter of a lot, to two acres, the further out you go. In the village proper, say for example, if my neighbor wanted to put chickens up, they'd be all over my yard, and vice versa, if I wanted to raise chickens, they'd be all over her yard, but, of course, we share a driveway, which nobody else does, yeah, as far as I know. Then again, if you have two acres or three acres on either end, or two acres on either end, part of that acreage is built up, because you've got to have a house on there somehow, possibly a barn, a garage, you could even have a shed on there. So, really, the most room you're going to have is one acre, to give or take, to raise those chickens. The whole intent of the section, as it was proposed by the previous zoning administrator, not the current one, I believe, was to not allow a large commercial enterprise to come in, buy up three or four lots, put it all together and say, okay, I'm going to have a flock of chickens of, you know, X amount, and it's going to be in the center of town. I do, I believe that was the whole intent. I have, I have not received, officially, I have not received any comments about chickens running over each other's neighbor's yards and things like this. And unless I do, as the zoning administrator, there is nothing to enforce. However, I do know that people have said, oh, yeah, my neighbor's chickens are always in my yard. And it's various people from all over the town. And, again, I think the intent from the previous administrator was to not allow that. To me, having a chicken running in your backyard is much like a cat running in your backyard, digging up your flowers.
Yeah.
And you don't own the cat, you know? But cats run wild, we don't know that, chickens possibly run wild. Should they be allowed to run wild? So maybe, maybe that should be the emphasis.
Well, and I think the emphasis of the draft specifically talked about. Well, and I think the emphasis of, of the, the draft specifically talked about, basically keeping them on your own property by constructing, you know, the proper areas that would keep them there.
Don't we have a nuisance animal ordinance anyway? So like, once an animal becomes a nuisance or, you know, a flock of animals in this case? Like, don't, don't we have mechanisms already in place for that sort of stuff, for nuisance or problem animals?
Not really. We do, but, um, but if it's a town ordinance, then, then it, it could get a little bit stickier in the fact that-
No, you already sent that one already? Because there's, there's an animal ordinance on the books.
Yeah.
Talks about nuisance.
It talks about nuisance, so the question is, would you consider a chicken a nuisance animal or not? Let's face it, most of the time a nuisance animal is a, is a dog or a cat, especially a dog that's barking at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning or something along those lines. Um, but who are, I mean, when you're talking about town ordinances, um, they're very hard to, to enforce. These at least would back that up, I should think. Or both, or vice versa. I mean, I don't, if you'll excuse the expression, I don't really have a dog in this fight. And, um, you know, in, in that respect, because right now, nobody around me has chickens.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think perhaps the biggest problem would be having a rooster crowing up 4:00 in the morning.
Yep.
That would be a nuisance, much more so. I don't know.
Rejouting the nuisance, I'd give back to, can you tell one chicken from another? So if there are full chickens, you, one chicken gets a nuisance or is it like every other day is a different chicken? So I don't know that, you know, I just don't know how you call about that. Like, it's Joe, it's chicken, or it's easy to take it. Like, I don't know which chicken it is.
True.
And you don't wanna blame all the chickens, because it might only be one or two.
Honestly, I think the most important thing is that people are cooperating with the spirit of the law.
Yeah.
I've always, I've always gone that route, you know? We're trying to comply-
I can attest to chickens.
Excuse me? Jill?
I can attest to chickens. I have eight. If eight chickens is enough, and they can be a nuisance, especially when they're free ranging, because they like to poop wherever they wanna poop. They will dig up every part of your garden. They'll sit on your car and do whatever they, scratch your car. Yeah, they can be a real pain. For a few eggs, yeah. So, I can imagine in town, you know?
Yeah, and, and, and what we're trying to do here is just-
They're gonna confine them, and let's say, in a confined, caged area.
Well-
You know, they're gonna go everywhere they want, especially up in the road to get gravel.
So there we are.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have experienced roosters growing, um, and we have experienced chickens in our backyard. Both are live and, you know, carcasses in our backyard.
Yeah, carcasses.
You know, a lot of little flies that never existed before.
Mm-hmm.
Extra noise. So they are a nuisance, for sure, for us. And they do affect our quality of life. We have a backyard that we have fenced in, uh, so we can spend time with the dogs and the-
Yeah!
And, you know, it's, you know, a lot of little things that disturb that kinda peace of mind, you know? We both work 50-plus hours a week, so having that relaxation time is important to us. And having constant noise, little flies, like, it is a nuisance. So if, if it were to grow any more than it is-
That's the key, is, yeah.
Yeah.
The amount of nuisance is the key.
I mean, it's, they're tolerable levels. Um, I think 12 is more than the others. But I think it's, I think it's reasonable.
Okay. So I will redraft the earlier wording, be more specific, particularly regarding non-agricultural zoning districts. And, um, I'll have it on the table for next month, in the finalized, I hope, form.
So the big, I mean, I don't know if we got a final answer on it, but the grandfathered in, like if we set the number at 12, and we don't know how many they have. Nobody knows how many they have.
Oh, it's impossible.
Yeah.
But if they were there before we, we passed this, that's how it is.
Well, the question would be, why, what would stop somebody from saying, if they have 50 right now, what would stop them from saying, "I have 12?"
Say again? I didn't hear the last parts.
If, if, if somebody would-
She's saying, "Wouldn't say lie," basically.
Oh!
Or if they just don't have, we don't have an accurate account, so how would we ever know? You know?
I think it comes down to, again, um, working it out. We have incredible amounts of legislation in these, even regarding when you put up a fence 18 inches back from the property line. So you can maintain your own fence, okay? So, we're trying to head some of these off at the pass, but we, we recognize that there are things in place that we can't undo. And, um, and I agree, people will lie and, and things will happen. But in general, if it becomes a health issue like carcasses in the, in the backyard, then that would be a complaint for the health department. And believe me, they have a lot of clout.
And that, that is one of, one of the, uh, concerns that may need to be addressed is how do you take care of the manure?
Yeah, we had that. It's pretty specifically laid out.
There's a whole, there's a couple paragraphs in there.
Yeah. And, uh, but, you know, the, the idea of, of flies and, and car guy, that is a general safety concern, uh, health concern, particularly since you have dogs, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just a few years out of female for cancer, so I have, you know, me and my deficiency issues and everything else now, so, you know, it's not just adults.
No.
People too.
So, so as far as I'm concerned, let me redraft this and we'll move on.
Sorry for taking all your time.
No, no, no.
It's personal.
And next month?
And I know it's-
Next month, we'll have something more concrete.
And I think the key is, you know, right now, it's very relative to us, but because there wasn't anything in place, it could be any, it could be any of your neighbors at any time.
Yep.
And your next-door neighbor could decide to do this or you could decide. So, so I think it's relevant to the entire residency of the town proper.
We wanna make a village that people want to live in, and those that have lived here don't want things to all of a sudden change. "Hey, I've always had my house here, and now I got six llamas in the, in the yard next door."
And to answer the question on animal control ordinances, I found it. No owner keeper or other persons having control shall, permit an animal to be a nuisance animal. For the purposes of the section, nuisance animal means any animal or animals which one, unless harassed, passed or buys or passing vehicles, attacks other animals, damages properties other than that of its owner, defecates on private property other than the owner's within the village, Wallingford Fire District Number One, or on town properties and the owner or other individual in control of the animal fails to remove such deposits immediately. I like the way they put it.
Yes.
Barks, whines, howls or cries in an excessive and continuous fashion so as to disturb the peace and quiet of the other persons. The following definitions shall apply. At-large means not under control of the owner. Dog is-
Dog.
Enforcement official when used herein shall mean any dog, warden, constable or any individual specifically designated by the select board to, uh, enforce the provisions of the ordinance and the owner, uh, any person or persons, firms, associations or corporation owning, keeping, harboring or having control of the dog. This is really, uh, and, and it continues on.
Yeah, it's, it's well-written.
But it's, it's at-large, dogs, removal of dog waste, poisoning of dogs, marketing prohibited, license required, collar required, um, impoundment, and it says dogs. Property owner may impound, and dogs, notice of impoundment, talking about dogs. Redemption of impounded dogs, uh, animal control hearings, vicious dogs, uh, repeated impoundment, keeping of other animals other than household pets. Uh, no horses, pigs, chickens, goats, sheep, cows or any domesticated or farm animal not wardenly kept as a household pet shall be kept or boarded with any enclosure or structure or any portion which is within 150 feet of the dwelling of an adjoining property owner. And that is-
I thought it was within 150 feet of the dwelling of the home.
Dwelling of any adjoining property owner.
Yeah, it's the dwelling, she said.
Fortune 16.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's really all-
I think that's been taken care of already. It was previously within 150 feet of it, but we commented next, but to give after.
Yeah. And that is really the only thing it addresses when it comes to farm animals or other animals not kept as a household, that's it.
The state is-
Jill?
The state's quite thinking about the, uh, opposing it to a water source too, like what-
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, this is just the town ordinance, and this was in effect as of, um, November, November 7th, uh, 2011.
We do also have stream and pond in the background, on all of our properties.
And truly, it doesn't, it, it does not, uh, again, I'm looking at it. It does not address, uh, water sources whatsoever.
Well, we did.
So, but that's, that's the noise, that's the nuisance ordinance.
I think Kevin had to do it, I think it was about the water.
Yes, it has, very specific. And, uh, and it works, that's all I can tell you.
That's it. I would stand the groundhog question, because the number is already way over 12.
Yes.
So obviously, that is being protected, so.
Mm-hmm.
Or just that somebody has some other animals, right?
Yeah.
That are on the, well, I do not have all the time, because it's a broader, chickens are part of the overall.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. I didn't know they were applying for other-
There will, yeah, there are some, and there will be specifics. But for now, we just-
Can you do something about brown hogs along the way, then?
Uh-huh.
Any other comments? So Kevin, you will take another stab at it?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's not gonna be difficult putting the pieces together. We got 'em.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we just wanted to be here to, to make sure that there was a voice.
Hey, as far as I'm concerned, I love people in the chairs.
For sure.
Because, you know, we're sitting here in the dark, trying to do the best we can.
No, absolutely.
We appreciate it, and I like that neutrality is wonderful. The public is always invited.
Yeah. And not only invited, encouraged.
Yeah.
Definitely. And PEG TV is always, is always here, but it's nice sometimes if you have a question just to get it answered from the whole commission.
Sure. Is that somebody else can say if this is live or if it's-
This is, this is recorded, isn't it?
Or it's an animal, so it's, yeah, so it all works, yeah.
Okay. So, comments from the public? Do you have any additional?
Thank you.
Our scheduled next meeting is the 8th of June. Um, unless, uh, there's an objection for, from anyone?
Nope.
Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Hey.